Five P M. And this is a meeting of the Acushnet Board of Selectmen, a joint meeting, the Board of Selectmen and our Finance Committee with our friends from Old Colony. We're here to talk about the November eighteenth vote to question before voters of five communities to consider funding the construction of a new school. So with that said, there's a motion called a Selectmen's Meeting to order. So moved. I'll second that. All those in favor? Aye. Then I'm an aye. Where Selectmen's Meeting is open, I'll turn over to Finance Committee to open that meeting.
Thank you, David. Good evening, everyone. This is a joint meeting of the Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen to discuss the Old Colony Building Project. It's Tuesday, October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. This meeting is being audio and video recorded. Do we have a motion? It's open or not?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll just ask the folks at the table from Old Colony to identify yourself. But from what I understand, this is one of thirty-six meetings that have been planned since August twenty-seventh. I know you've been on the road show, like had a number of meetings at the school with various stakeholders. You've seen, you know, a fair amount of interest, but I think now's the time to really step it up from an education standpoint with a little less than three weeks or so up until an important election. So we wanted to make sure we provided this opportunity for residents who would come in person to ask questions, but also this will be memorialized on YouTube TV and we will get this out, get the word out as much as possible. Just by way of background, Old Colony has put forward, the school district has put forward a question as to whether or not voters in five towns will consider, will approve or disapprove funding for construction of a new school. And with that comes budgetary considerations, not only for the municipalities, but the individual voters. As a member of the board, I've served on the School Building Committee, Feasibility Committee, and the one thing I can attest to is just the process. There's been a thorough process. There's been a number of meetings in that regard. I'm one of, I think, what, twenty-five people or twenty-plus on that committee, who, and each person there, whether they're an elected official or an appointed official, the one thing that was first and foremost, you know, with the obvious of serving the needs of the students in the student population, but every person at that meeting has taken into account the taxpayer and how it'll impact them and how it'll impact their municipality's budget. So I just want to at least share that with you. With that said, I'll turn it over to Mr. Polansky and you can do the introductions and lead the discussion.
Sure. We'll take a moment just to, we'll take a moment just to follow through with introductions. Aaron Polansky, Superintendent, Old Colony Regional Vocational Technical High School.
I'm Walter Hartley with PMA Consultants. We are the Owners Project Management Team, also a resident of Rochester.
I am a resident of Rochester. I am a school committee member from Rochester and I am currently the chair of the Building Committee. And my name is Shirley Burke. I probably should have put that in there somewhere.
I'm Sarah Griffith. I oversee the finances for the school district.
Good evening. I'm Mark Adrian. I'm with PMA Consultants. We're your Owners Project Manager.
Chad Critten, also a PMA Consultant as Owners Project Manager.
Just quickly, Mr. Gasco. Everybody knows Mr. Gasco. We just wanted to make sure. Siobhan Kevin, the House. Well, David Woner, Finance Committee members, please.
Mike Bouchet, Chairman of Finance Committee.
Pete Benoit, Finance Committee.
Eric Chu, Finance Committee.
Lisa Orlovsky, Tom Wilson, Finance Committee.
Great, thank you. Just ask that you talk into the microphone for the whole presentation because this way it'll get picked up with the video.
Sure. So real quickly, what we'd like to do is show a brief ten-minute video which will catch everyone up to speed on where we currently stand. It's a synopsis of the longer one-hour presentation that will spare you only because we'd like to spend a majority of the time answering some questions and providing clarity around a couple of items that were brought to our attention. So we'll begin with the video and then we'll proceed with some Q and A.
On November eighteenth, Old Colony Regional Vocational Technical High School will ask our member towns, Acushnet, Carver, Lakeville, Mattapoisett, and Rochester, for voter approval of a new high school building project through the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or MSBA. Old Colony is not just an educational institution for our five-member towns. We're a partner in service in labor market solution and a destination for many to take advantage of a community-focused outreach that happens each and every day. Old Colony students have been responsible for projects like the construction of the COA Shed and installation of electric car stations in Acushnet, the Carver Junior Senior High Concession Stand, construction of Loom Pond Lodge in Ted Williams Park in Lakeville, renovation of the American Legion, Holy Ghost Grounds and Dunseeth Gardens in Mattapoisett, and construction of the COA Shed, work at Plum Library, and the upcoming addition to the Rochester Council on Aging, to name only a few. With the addition of a plumbing and HVAC program, Old Colony will become a fully operational construction outfit with direct additional benefit for our communities and taxpayers. In this video, we'll show the opportunity we have to secure more than a hundred twenty-five million dollars in state funds through the MSBA to fund the project. We'll review how we got here to the key inflection point of public approval by reviewing the steps we've completed in the MSBA process. We'll share the schematic designs of the new high school and describe the vocational, educational, and community benefits of the project. We'll detail the project's scope and budget for the new high school, including the amount that would be financed on our local tax rolls. And we'll explain how public approval of the project works, including the implications of yes and no votes on November eighteenth, when polls will be open from noon to eight P M. Old Colony and its member communities have a rare opportunity to fund a new vocational technical high school with the MSBA. The MSBA is a state authority that helps local school districts pay for the design and construction of schools. For every dollar spent, one penny of our state sales tax goes to the MSBA, and it's funded more than seventeen billion dollars in statewide school construction since two thousand and four. The program is highly competitive. Only about fifteen percent of school districts that apply are accepted into the program each year. Old Colony was accepted into the program in March two thousand and twenty-two and has spent the past three years meeting MSBA requirements, hiring a project team, and gathering public feedback. The MSBA process is rigorous, but ensures that our project not only meets the highest standards in twenty-first century vocational technical education in the most fiscally responsible solution. The payoff for this work is significant. If voters approve, Old Colony can have about fifty-five percent of its eligible costs reimbursed by the MSBA and another five-point-seven percent paid through incentive points for maintenance, efficiency, and sustainability. Meanwhile, the cost of repair and renovation of the existing fifty-year-old building with no additional programming and no expanded enrollment estimates to more than one hundred thirty million dollars on longer timelines and with no reimbursement from the MSBA. Here's how the Old Colony Regional Vocational Technical High School got to the point of public approval with our communities voting on November eighteenth. The school was selected in the highly competitive MSBA core program in March two thousand and twenty-two because the existing school building has reached the end of its useful life. Opened in nineteen-seventy-five, the building celebrated its fiftieth year in service this year. And despite incredible maintenance efforts to keep the building in good working condition, the building's size, design, and space no longer serves the needs associated with the twenty-first century vocational education. With significant space constraints for existing programs that do not match enrollment demand, do not provide room for vital student supports, nor room to expand vocational offerings like HVAC, plumbing, and dental assisting, which are in high demand in our communities. To begin the process, Old Colony's School Building Committee, consisting of school and town leaders and resident volunteers, conducted a feasibility study, hired a project team which includes an Owners Project Manager and architectural design firm, and embarked on a comprehensive effort to hear from the community through informational sessions, focus groups, and, most importantly, an educational visioning process where anyone in our communities, including our students, could help capture the needs a new Old Colony should serve. Our School Building Committee took all of this feedback to create an educational plan, which directed the design team to create several options of renovation, addition, and replacement of the high school. The project team presented forty different scenarios to evaluate, which the School Building Committee evaluated with a detailed scoring system to identify the most financially responsible solution which supports Old Colony's long-term educational goals. The School Building Committee identified eight options for the project team to develop further, including various options of repair, renovation, addition, and new construction. And in December two thousand and twenty-four, the School Building Committee selected a new construction option for seven-hundred-and-seventy-six students as its preferred option to build an entirely new building adjacent to the existing school. Here's how our design team took months of planning, public feedback, and guidance from our School Building Committee to design and scope out every inch of a new Old Colony Regional Vocational Technical High School. The new two-story building will measure approximately two hundred seventy thousand square feet, located adjacent to the existing school building. This minimizes disruption to school activities during the construction period and saves time, money, and resources that a phase-in construction would require. The building is laid out in four main wings, arrayed around a central hub, the heart of the school. The gymnasium anchors the health and wellness wing, which will also house new science labs, our health careers program, and a new dental assisting program on the second floor. The wings south and west converge with this one to provide a complete offering of publicly accessible spaces, including the auditorium and cafeteria, hugged with the culinary program, along with cosmetology and business on the first floor. On the opposite side of the site layout, automotive, machine and tool, and metal fabrication are located in the southeast wing and share a working courtyard with their neighboring wing to the north, which hosts the construction cluster, HVAC, plumbing, electrical, and carpentry. Academic classrooms are located throughout, including a dedicated music space and room for breakout sessions, counseling, and integrated special education. With room for seven-hundred-and-seventy-six students, this expanded capacity provides a more equitable way to meet demand for in-demand vocational programs and meets the key educational goals and objectives reflected from our communities through visioning and our School Building Committee's educational plan: promoting, personalization, connection, and ownership, a culture of learning, vocational learning that happens in clusters, school as a community resource, a secure and welcoming place, adaptability and sustainability in design, and both indoor and outdoor learning. Here's the project's scope and budget for a new Old Colony Regional Vocational Technical High School under the MSBA process. The total project budget is approximately two hundred eighty-eight point seven million dollars. This includes careful contingency planning for rising costs and demolition of the existing building, which will be converted into additional parking space. If approved by our member communities in a November eighteenth election, MSBA would contribute about one hundred twenty-nine million dollars to the budget, or about sixty-and-a-half percent of the eligible project costs. In addition to Old Colony's base reimbursement rate from the MSBA, the project will get another eleven million dollars in mass save rebates and IRA tax credits, leaving about one hundred forty-eight million dollars to be financed on the local taxuals of our member communities, distributed between the towns based on annual enrollment date. Here's how we propose to pay for our portion, which will require our community's approval in a five-town election on November eighteenth: a debt exclusion, which means the tax increase is temporary and expires once the bond is paid off; a thirty-year bond using a conservative interest rate of four percent. This is a fixed amount until the bond is repaid. You can see the average single-family assessed home value in each of our five towns to see the average annual tax impact, or use the tax impact calculator on our project website to input your home's value and estimated tax impact. In order to unlock MSBA funding, the new high school project now requires approval by voters in our five-member communities: Acushnet, Carver, Lakeville, Mattapoisett, and Rochester. Each town will hold its own special election on November eighteenth, with polls open from noon to eight P M., just like any other town election. However, the results are not five separate elections. This is one aggregated vote, where a simple majority would approve the project and its funding. If it does pass, the new high school will go through a year of design development and construction documentation, then bidding and construction, with the goal of cutting a ribbon and occupying the new school in the fall of two thousand and twenty-nine. If the project is not approved, Old Colony has just ten business days to submit a plan to the MSBA to remedy the failed vote. It may only schedule another vote with the MSBA's approval. Otherwise, the MSBA's involvement would cease, and any future MSBA involvement on a future project or repair effort would require the filing of a new statement of interest by Old Colony. We would go back to the beginning of the process if and when the MSBA accepts us back into the program, which is historically a five-to-ten-year process. Without the MSBA, Old Colony will have to address the repair and renovation of the vocational technical high school through its regular capital improvement process, where taxpayers in our five communities pay the full cost without state assistance. We estimate base repair and code improvements to the existing high school at one hundred thirty-four point three billion dollars. One hundred percent of these expenses would have to be paid with local tax dollars. The cost of maintaining the school would continue to rise and would not address any of the existing space issues at the school, nor provide capacity to open new vocational programs. At Old Colony, our project vision for a new high school is to foster opportunities for integrative vocational and academic learning in a modernized facility that's designed to maximize student voice, independence, and exploration. We've compiled every design detail and document, as well as a tax impact calculator for you to review on our project website. That's oldcolonybuildingproject.com.
So at this point in time, I'm going to turn the mic over to Chad Critten in from PMA, and he'll start with a few slides that will address some of the questions that have been posed.
Thank you, Superintendent Polansky. So again, my name is Chad Critten. I'm with PMA Consultants and Owners Project Manager. So we were here not too long ago, a few weeks back, and we have a long presentation. We can kind of jump around that. We're not going to make you sit through the entire hour-long slideshow deck again. But I wanted to show you some of the updated or new material. It's been just kind of refined to answer some of the questions that have been surfaced since the last time we were here. So you heard in the video, we looked at over forty options. We narrowed that down to eight finalist options. Right now, at this point in time, the MSBA is onboard. Their Board of Directors are in full support of the new build option. They see that as the most financially responsible solution that meets the district's educational programming needs and goals. So really, two choices left at this point in time. Either move forward with the MSBA, or we do not move forward with the MSBA, which is kind of the status quo, so left to repair that building as time goes on. You can see here, side by side, those two options. So the repair cost, you heard in the video, a hundred and thirty-four million dollars. That's the today cost. That's the do everything at once and sort of rip the Band-Aid off and go out the entire building in a very long-phased occupied renovation. On the right side, you see the cost to build new. This is broken up into three different sections. So the bottom, darker gold, is a hundred and forty-eight million dollars. That's the district share to build a new building. Above that, you see a smaller slice, that eleven million dollars. So that is the mass save rebates and IRA tax credits that that new build would be eligible for. And then on the top there, you see the MSBA's contribution of a hundred and twenty-nine million dollars. So the choices before us now is really what direction we're going to go in. Do we repair existing, or do we move forward with the new build? New build is about a ten percent higher district share cost, but it's a much more suitable building. It gets you that minimum MSBA fifty-plus years. Repairs, in our experience, end up being a little bit of a death by a thousand cuts. So once you start to peel that onion, you find more and more issues. So certainly a lower-risk option. We'll jump over to the next slide. Well, so one of those challenges with the repair projects, lots of code triggers that we run into. So the question we get is why not just address the building's core needs now and then address additional needs as they arise? So there are lots of needs right now, failures within that building that need to be addressed. The way that the five-twenty CMR regulations read, once you exceed thirty percent of the building's assessed value, you're required to bring the building up to full five-twenty-one CMR code compliance. Assessed value is seventeen million, so that thirty percent trigger happens around five million dollars. So just attacking some of the core problems, the water issue we know about, we know that there's failed plumbing underneath the slab, you're going to be brushing up against that trigger right there on five-twenty-one CMR. We jump to the next slide. So that hits a whole bunch of other triggers, and it really is a chain reaction. So five-twenty-one CMR, once you hit five million dollars, makes you accessibility compliant. Think about things like wheelchair turning radius, slopes, door frame, push-pulls, frames that are recessed in the walls, forward reaches, sideways reaches, all that stuff. So in order to make that compliant, you're going to lose real estate. Bathrooms have to get bigger. When you make a bathroom bigger, you took away space from the room that was next to that bathroom, and we're already constrained for space. So it really is a full chain reaction. We also have I E C C, which is the International Energy Code, requirements in there. At some point, you trip seven-eighty CMR, which are the structural code upgrade requirements. So think things like snow roads up, snow loads up on the roof, sheer and seismic requirements within the structure of the building, things like brace frames. So a brace frame is a giant, best way to describe it is a X made out of tube steel that has to go in select locations in the building. So imagine a structural engineer says that needs to land in the middle of a big shop space. Now you just lost some more square footage. Fire safety is an important one, of course, one forty-eight CMR. So once you affect thirty-three percent of the building's floor plan, you have now triggered one forty-eight CMR. So lots of code triggers that you run into. The first one that you generally hit is that thirty percent of assessed value threshold for a five-twenty-one CMR. And then once you address that, it's snowball effect, and you run into the other code triggers. We did do a hypothetical. So we said, what if these code triggers didn't exist? Because the question came up a lot. We said, okay, let's look at it. We know that the cost of repairs is a hundred and thirty-four million dollars. And we said, okay, let's do ten percent of the most critical needs every five years and see how long it plays out before we financially made the wrong decision, whether or not the building is complete or not, different situation. But so we said, okay, let's map that out. So each of those bars is the ten percent of the repair cost, so thirteen-point-four million dollars. What we did is we escalated it at four percent annually. The Massachusetts market is probably nearly double that escalation rate, but we wanted to run conservative numbers. And we said, okay, so two thousand and twenty-six, we'll do thirteen-point-four million. Two thousand and thirty-one, we'll do thirteen-point-four plus the four percent annual escalation, so on, so forth. And we'll map that against the green line, which is the district share of the new building, which we bonded over thirty years. So you can see where the red and the green line cross. You really hit that break-even right around the twenty-year mark. So you've addressed by two thousand and forty-one forty percent of your building needs, and you've already hit the cumulative costs that you would have on the debt service. And then from that point on, it just gets worse and worse. So by the end of that thirty years, the new building debt service, you're looking at a hundred and forty-seven million dollar district share. In order to repair the building over that same period of time, every five years, you spent a hundred and eighty-two million dollars, and you only completed seventy percent of your necessary repairs. Now you're thirty years into the future, so who knows what other repair needs popped up in that time. Jump over to the next one.
One of the questions that came up in our last meeting was around operating costs. And so what we attempted to do was map out what a perspective, and these are just projections or estimates, but what our operating costs from staffing perspectives would look like. Our baseline is five-sixty. We'd be looking at an additional fifty-four students per year. In year one, you'll see the addition of the vocational areas, so one instructor in plumbing, H V A C and dental respectively, and one instructor in music and art, because those currently do not exist, and this would allow for space to offer those programs. That number would remain consistent for the first two years, and then we would add an additional plumbing, H V A C, and dental instructor in years three and four to complete the staffing for those respective programs. In the academic areas, in year one, with the addition of fifty-four students, we'd have, we would add half of an E L A teacher, one math teacher, one science teacher, and half a history position. Those would remain static in year two. Class sizes would increase. We used a tipping point of twenty-five per class. In year three, we would add an additional teacher in those academic areas and carry that through to year four. The same model is used with special education. So that gives you an idea of what the staffing would look like with the addition of two hundred sixteen students total on both the academic and the vocational side. Next slide. In year one, we proposed the addition of an admissions director, a school psychologist, and a co-op coordinator. The square footage of the school is going to increase from about a hundred seven thousand square feet to two hundred seventy thousand square feet, and that will require an additional, a large group of custodial staff. Additionally, we would anticipate separating a shared clerical position and establishing a new clerical position, so that's a plus-one, and our business office at some point would also experience a plus-one. Growth of the cafeteria staff is budgeted through the cafeteria program, but we would be remiss if we didn't show the growth in that particular area as well. And from a transportation fleet perspective, with the addition of fifty-four students per year, we would, we would estimate two buses in year one and then an additional bus in each year for a total change of approximately five buses. Again, these are best-guess estimates. It's hard to zero in on what the exact needs will be, but this gives a somewhat of an overview of the increases to the operating budget. Next slide, please. And I'll turn this over to, back over to you, Chad, if you'd like.
Thank you. So some of the costs for any building will actually come down. A new building comes with essentially a one-year bump-in-a-bumper statutory warranty. It's a master-montreality building. It's going to have that. Certain systems will have longer warranties carried within that system. For example, a new roof warranty is thirty years. That'll be specified for the product that's being currently carried in the estimates. Operational costs, you would think the building gets bigger, operational costs would go up, utility costs, gas and electric. So we did study that, and we took the historical bills over the past year. So historical, over the past twelve months, gas and electric costs is two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Working with the engineers, we have them project what that utility cost would be for that new building in today's dollars. So that came in much, much lower at forty-one cents a square foot. So a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. So there is a savings associated with that utility cost. Jump over to the next slide. And so we take all this information, all the teaching, the transportation, the support and admin, the utility costs, all those items, and Sarah here was kind enough to crunch them all into her budget. And we mapped out two scenarios again. The red bars show no-built scenario, so just showing a three percent annual growth year over year right through F Y thirty-four. And then the gold bar shows what it would look like with a new seven-hundred-and-seventy-six-student building. So this is all operation cost, doesn't factor in any chapter seventy or chapter seventy-one state aid. So you can see on the far right, if we fast-forward into F Y thirty-four, you're looking at about a fourteen-point-eight percent increase in total operational costs. If we dive to the next level of detail, and we now factor in what that projected chapter seventy and chapter seventy-one state aid looks like, the cost increase is, is a little more subtle. So that same period, F Y thirty-four, with the new seven-hundred-and-seventy-six-student building, you're looking at an operational cost increase that makes it back to the districts of around six percent. So you're increasing your enrollment by around forty percent, but operational costs in that same period are rising by six percent after state aid is factored in. We can jump. I think that's probably it for the new slides. I think at this point, we're happy to turn it over to any questions, comments, discussion items. We have lots more material that we're happy to run through, but...
Quick question, just because, just because.
Chopping on your head, it'll work.
So just because we're looking at the operational costs, and you broke it down after the aid, which is great, but we're looking at big numbers there. So with the addition of the new two-hundred-plus students that you have, what's our operational cost or our annual cost per student going to be? And I ask that since Acushnet currently has thirty-five percent of your overall student budget.
Do you want to speak in general?
I know it was a six percent increase. I'm just wondering what that translates into dollars per student, roughly.
Yeah. So I don't have that breakdown right now available, but based on the projections that we did, that would depend on how many students you had at the school district. So we don't know what's going to happen with Acushnet and...
I'm not asking for a cushion. I'm just asking what your, your average annual growth is going to be in cost per student, once you've got your full complement of two hundred and twenty-four?
Yeah. I would say it would be about six percent, based on what that's showing right now.
Well, that's your overall. Well, that's your overall operating cost.
Yes.
Your operating cost is six percent, but you're adding students into it. So I was just wondering what that is per student.
So that is actually, the, the cost projection is a per pupil cost projection.
That's fourteen million. So if we divided fourteen million by seven hundred students, that doesn't come up to the right number.
Seven hundred and seventy six students. Yeah, eighteen five.
Yep.
Which is about what we're at right now. I mean, that's not, it's a little bit of an increase every year, but that's not very different from what, I mean, every town is different based on their minimum local contribution.
Yeah.
So you can take our budget and you can divide it by seven hundred and seventy six students, but that does not equal the cost of a student for that individual town. So the first number you have to factor in is your minimum local contribution, which is set by the state. Their proportionate share of every single town's assessment is based on how many students they have at Old Colony after a minimum local contribution has been set by the state. So it's driven by that. So a per pupil for Acushnet and a per pupil for Matapoiset are very different because the town's ability to pay is different.
Right, Shannon.
I have a quick question. What's with the new Massachusetts regulation of everybody being on lottery system only? Doesn't that, isn't it gonna fluctuate? Like, we're not gonna have a set amount of students that are gonna come from Acushnet and Rochester, it's gonna be on the lottery system. So we can have as many students as any other state town, right?
So that's a good question. We actually have a video online available on our Facebook page, just to give a deeper explanation of the work that was done to protect, to protect against an excessive draw. We had concerns about excessive draw for all of our municipalities, because let's say by chance you were to draw a hundred and fifty students from one community, that would be devastating to the municipality. So what we did was we took two numbers. We call them a historical number, which is the number of ninth grade students over the past three years averaged. That gives us fifty percent of the quota that will be created. The next number is gonna be called the predictive number. The predictive number is a K through twelve enrollment. I'm sorry, it's the eighth grade enrollment for the member town compared to the eighth grade aggregate from all member towns. That percentage is multiplied by a hundred and fifty seats or the number of seats that we'll be accepting in that given year, and that gives us the predictive number. We take the historical and the predictive numbers, we combine them, and we divide them by two. What that does is it maintains a quota for every single town. If a student from Acushnet says, I chose not to attend, that seat is filled with another student from Acushnet and not another member town. If a town exhausts or does not exhaust their seats and does not use all their seats, every seat will rotate through the remaining member towns to ensure equal distribution and to avoid overwhelm for any municipality. Does that make sense?
Yeah, because I've been piling through it. My son was, went in to apply for you guys, and he also was eligible to apply for B P.
Sure.
And he got into B P first, and then there was an eligible seat in, in Old Colony, but again, already started. So he stayed in B P.
Sure.
And just off key, I'm gonna have to say that it's best to build a new school, because these kids need to be as competitive as all the other schools. Because B P has, has had all their construction while the kids go into school, and I'll have to say, there is no interruption with the school. The school is gonna be absolutely gorgeous, and it's gonna give them way more opportunities. And it's time for Old Colony, my oldest son went to Old Colony. It's time for Old Colony to move up and get more, more, more aspects. They need to have more trades. These kids want trades.
My son is also a freshman at B P. I can tell you that during a drop off in the morning, I'll share openly, I, I called Chad about a, a meeting we were preparing for, and he said to me, where are you? I said, I'm dropping my son off at school. He said, do you wanna take a quick walk and see the building? I said, I would love to. And we threw on our P P E and we walked through the construction. And I, I'm a taxpayer. I will tell you one hundred percent, I was filled with a sense of pride because it's an investment. And second of all, I had a little bit of trepidation and jealousy because this is a big ask. And Kevin made a valid point at the last meeting, and that was, the impact of what we're asking is significant, and we recognize that. We hang a sign on it. And so I think everyone here is doing their due diligence to make sure that they can answer the appropriate questions. We're doing our due diligence to try and provide the best forecast possible in a transparent manner. I think the FinCom and the Select Board have always been partners in our planning process. So during our budget process, we'll have folks in, they sit with us before we ever go to a final final with our budget to bring to the town or our member towns. And so that will continue. There will be collaboration. Our job is to present a worst case scenario with hopes that we can come in with numbers that hopefully are a lot better. For those who aren't familiar, P M A and H M F H are the same team at Bristol Plymouth, and they came in tens of millions of dollars under budget. So I, if Chad has a slide, actually, he can speak to that. I don't know if you wanna.
Aaron, just before you go there, while we're talking about, you know, how many numbers from Acushnet and Matapoiset, this offhand, you know, the, the numbers of Acushnet applications over the last few years, the number of actual bodies in seats, and how many schools were there ones that were turned down because we didn't have, because you didn't have the, you know.
So I don't know number of applications. I can tell you, it's in a prior slide that we have shown to the Select Board before, and I wanna say it was in the eighties or nineties in terms of number of applications. But the number of students accepted from Acushnet over the last three years have been fifty three and twenty, uh, our ten one numbers. For twenty three, our ten one numbers were sixty. For twenty four, our ten one number was fifty two. For twenty five, our ten one number was fifty three. The average of those three years is fifty five, and that will be the historical number used for the predict, for, for the data. The predictive eighth grade number right now is one oh six, which means nothing until we have the remainder of information from the aggregate, because we'll have to compare it to the aggregate, if that makes sense. But I believe we've had a large portion of the Acushnet freshman class apply to Old Colony every year, because I think in terms of the options, students like to leave their option open. Just 'cause you apply, A, doesn't mean you need to attend, right? So that's one piece. And B, just 'cause you apply, doesn't mean that you necessarily get in. Right now, the move from a merit-based system to a lottery-based system makes it much easier to apply, but much less, much more difficult to predict whether or not a student will get in. And I will openly share that I had concerns about moving to a lottery. I'm a strong believer that if students are working to earn an opportunity, it's not a bad exercise. However, the, the positive side of this is that with a lottery, every student will have an opportunity, but there's no way to predict outside of the town by town which students will be provided that opportunity.
If you're a resident, you have a question. I just ask that you come up to the podium, identify yourself, just so it's easier for people to hear and whatever. So anybody else have questions? Sure, please come up.
My name is Kevin Sylvia, Northwest Street. Not so much of a question, but I want to mention that Old Colony has been a member of this, or Acushnet has been a member of Old Colony for fifty plus years, for fifty years. And they have shared that community with excellence. We have many, many students that have gone through Old Colony that are very, very successful in their careers. We're talking about a new building, because the existing building is too small. They're bulging at the seams, the infrastructure of the building is obsolete. You're gonna spend two hundred plus million dollars in the next twenty years just trying to catch up and renovate the building. Now it's gonna be seventy years old, and we're gonna be throwing that money away because we're gonna be looking for a new school then. Yes, it's a big ask. It's a big ask for the taxpayers, but we need to invest in our children, in our students, and give them the opportunity that we have had throughout our lifetime. The existing programs are excellent, they're gonna be adding programs. We're talking about the building. We're not talking, of course, we're talking numbers of students, how many there's, how many students are gonna come, what's the lottery gonna look at? Of course, we're, we're looking at that. But to throw money into an old facility, might as well throw it out the window right here, because you're not gonna get it back. Thirty years at a four percent, I don't think you could buy that money anywhere. It's very cost effective. The planning has been very, very well sought after, looked at, studied. It's not something that, okay, we decided, let's try and do this, we, we thought of it next, last week. Now, this has been in planning for years. They have jumped through all the hurdles to get to the point of where they are right now. Concerns from other communities, spending a lot of money, of course. But again, we've had a community that opt out of Old Colony, some years back, and they're very, very sorry that they did that, because they know they should have stayed with Old Colony. You're looking at educating the future of our children, you're looking at a new building, again, warranties that are, will be existing, a lot more efficient. The school that we currently have, you're gonna have to add on, you're gonna have to spend a ton of money. We're looking at a facility here where the student per square footage meets the recommendations, where currently, they don't. Okay, they're crowded, they're overcrowded. Vocational education in Massachusetts has been a leader throughout the country since the inception of vocational education. Let us not forget that. I've, I've had people from different parts of the country admire the educational facilities, programming that we have. We are the best of the best. Our students deserve the best of the best. You're talking a new facility where they're gonna be able to breathe, your health, safety, electronics, everything will meet the codes that are needed. Give our students a chance. Of course, you're gonna look at numbers, but give our students a chance for their future. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else from the, from the community?
Hi, John Tibbs, Gloria's Way. I guess I'm probably not specifically in, in opposition, but I have questions about the costs. We've got a two hundred and eighty eight million dollar price tag on this proposal, and we have recent projects to refer to, such as Bristol Aggie and the project of B P. You've got B P houses nearly twice as many students, and it's only, I think, what was it, three oh five was the cost of that project? This one's two eighty eight, with a proposal for about half the students. Okay? Bristol Aggie is about a hundred and five million, and they currently have about six hundred students. So I'm trying to reconcile that.
Yep.
Okay? The utility cost going down? Okay, I think there's some of that stuff embedded in there, meaning we've gotta build this building at certain requirements in order to meet certain efficiencies and things like that to qualify for this, for this type of a bill, for this program, through the M S B A. And I think it's probably gonna take decades to recoup that. It's embedded in the cost, so I'm trying to reconcile that. There's other parts of this that I have a problem with. Like, so for example, my taxes for my home is gonna increase about twelve hundred dollars a year, whereas if I own that home in Matapoiset, my increase would be about a hundred and forty two dollars a year. But my vote counts, exactly the same as the vote for somebody in Matapoiset. Having a problem with that. Additionally, if this building that we build lasts fifty years, this is just math, so if this building lasts fifty years like the last one, at the proposed student increase rate, we're paying eight thousand dollars a year per student per year for fifty years. I'm trying to reconcile that. So if we've got, the, the cost is already eighteen five, we've got another eight thousand on top of that. If this was private pay, who's paying twenty six thousand, five hundred dollars a year for a kid to go to Old Colony? So because that money is just in a, in a pile, right, from, from tax funds, it's a little bit, it's, 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 it's different to think about it as if it were private pay, that's what we're paying. And by the way, the eight thousand dollars per year per student over fifty years every single year, again, that doesn't include any maintenance, operational costs, any, you know, and by the way, even thirty years from now, we're gonna say, hey, that building's outdated, we're gonna be doing lots of repairs to that building. So I'm having trouble with just the project costs and how it's being proposed. And it feels like, I mean, we, we had a recent vote in town, and it was, you know, we've got other issues with other schools in town, okay? And, you know, we're looking at, hey, we've got mold issues and we've gotta fix that. This feels a lot like that proposal where they came to the board and they said, hey, we've got a four point two million dollar fix for a problem that can be solved for under a million bucks. It feels like that, a little bit. So just as, as a taxpayer, I feel like, you know, everybody, yeah, we want, we want a school, we want a nice place for our kids to go, we, we understand that the vocational school needs are, are huge, but do we need to spend eight thousand dollars per student a year for fifty years on that? And, you know, just me as a taxpayer, that, that number doesn't go up, I'm paying over thirty five thousand dollars over a thirty year note. And that also decreases the amount or the value of my home, okay, because, because it's a reduction in affordability for a new buyer in terms of the, the tax update. Somebody's gonna, I sell my house today, somebody's gonna have to pick up that burden. So, you know, the, and, and by the way, this happened in Dayton. So Dayton was one of those communities that got hit with the Bristol Aggie, and then got hit with the B P. The Bristol Aggie, I think it was very small, it was like forty six bucks a year, they were able to use the town levy to manage that and, and operations. I don't think we're, we're not gonna be able to do that in Acushnet. And then immediately after that, they, they got hit with the B P. The average taxpayer there is paying two fifty five a year for that. That's, I'm way lower than what Acushnet's gonna get hit with on this one. So I'm looking to reconcile some of those things. I, I hope that you guys can answer some of those questions.
Yeah, thank you. All excellent points tonight. I think we have some material that should put your mind at ease on, on each of those. I'll run through them, kinda point by point. Feel free to interject if you have any questions. While direction, gonna go forward slides?
Yep.
I'll start with this one.
You got it.
Also, cost, first building, a K through twelve school in Massachusetts, they're through the roof. I'm completely on board, I don't think anyone in this room will argue on that one. All we can do is try to be the most cost-effective project that we possibly can be. So these are, every project that is similar in size, scope, scale to Old Colony, going back over two years. So you have to go back twenty six months, so Tri County in August of twenty twenty three, to find one that matches Old Colony's target cost per square foot. So we're trying to build as efficiently as possible. Some leads, like the one below it, Lexington's going the same M S B A board, so that means they're in the same step of the M S B A process as Old Colony, over a thousand dollars a square foot. We're seeing that a lot in schools now, so that, it definitely a challenge, and we can jump back a slide, these two kinda go hand in hand. So the yellow box you see up there is where Old Colony lies. Each one of those little blips is a K through twelve projects and project in Massachusetts funded by the M S B A. I think there's about three hundred blips on that screen there. B P Tech is actually one of those bookmark, you can point at it there. B P Tech, you're right, that came in at five hundred and thirty something dollars a square foot. Back when B P was at this phase, we had the same exact concerns from Dayton, Amber Holdeth, and Berkeley, Elvira O'Ton, really all the communities. Our, our goal, when you have numbers and we do these projections.
Did you, I'm sorry, did you say B P was five hundred what per square foot?
Five thirty a square foot.
And where what, eight twenty nine?
Eight twenty nine.
Okay.
Yep. And that's just a function. So the orange line there is that trend line that we're seeing right now in the market. So we're all below that. I mean, the architect, the design team are gonna have to be very creative and aggressive in ways that they implement. One of the things that we're doing here, that the same thing was done in Bristol, but B P Tech was the highest hard, the most expensive hard bid project in state history. So a lot of people told us. So a lot of people told us that that was impossible, but they saved $40 million right out of the gate from going to hard bid. When we had these meetings at Bristol Plymouth, their district share projection was $179 million. Fast forward to today, right now, we're projecting a number of $35 million less than that. So there's a substantial savings for the taxpayers of BP. But one thing that's completely out of our control is the cost of, um, construction in Massachusetts. It's just been.
It can't have grown that much in two years.
Uh, I mean, this is today, it's right from the MSBA's website.
But again, I'm just, I'm having a tough time reconciling that.
Yep, well, BP, remember, didn't, they're not two years ago, it's been in construction for two years. So their authorization was in 2021.
Right, remember BP houses almost 1,400 students.
It does, yep.
Right, okay.
Right.
So again.
Cost per square foot.
What's that?
It's a cost per square foot.
Right, so you can have lots of square foot, like this has lots of square footage. If you build four kitchens in here, it's, it's very expensive, right? But you could, you don't have four kitchens. So the cost per square foot is very different. So I don't really appreciate that metric from, from, in terms of figuring out, you know, how efficient we're being in the build. So, you know, that's, that's, you could have a giant warehouse. That's a million square feet, right? So again, it's just the cost is determined by what you're building within the square footage. So to me, that's, I still look at 288 million for 760 students or 305 million for 1,400 plus. That's tough. So I, I, I just think that in the project, there's something, we're, we're losing efficiency somewhere.
There are, so we are the project managers for Bristol Plymouth. There are way more bells and whistles. I can say 100% honesty in Bristol Plymouth than there in this Old Colony scope. I mean, they, they really.
Again, now, now you're making me, now you're making it worse.
Right.
So, boy, now I feel.
Well, I mean, what I mean is Bristol Plymouth has, they have turf fields, they have concession stands, they have baseball fields. There are things in Bristol Plymouth project scope that they needed that don't exist in Old Colony.
Right. So again.
Because we're trying to be cost conservative by not addressing those.
I'm, I'm just having a tough time reconciling that number. So, thank, thank you, thank you very much.
Thanks, John.
Did, did you have a question?
No, I just.
Mr. Tebbs, you know, when there's an opening on FinCon, you'd seriously consider joining.
I, I served my, I served my three years and.
When, when we're talking about other schools, like we just talked about, like Lexington, I think that's a five-story school, right? So like price per square foot, I think goes way up when you start going higher.
Their renovation.
Stories. And then what's built into this project at the 288 is price per square foot? Are we upgrading equipment? Is that all built in? Because that's part of the article, I guess we'll call it article, the vote petition for town meeting. It's the furniture and everything else. So there's probably, there could be things that were built into BP that will build it in, but we're replacing a lot more equipment. You showed a slideshow, for crying out loud, I'm not even proud to talk about this, but I was, I'm a graduated class of 87 from Old Colony. And you showed the machine shop where the guy's still putting on a manual chuck. Like, um, I did CNC as soon as I graduated. I went to CNC, actually, I was the first junior in my class, oh, on co-op, um, in 1986, okay? And I went straight to CNC and you're still showing me a slideshow of the manual machine. So how much of the $288 million cost is upgrading the equipment to bring us? Because if that's still what you're teaching, you're about 40 years outdated, my friend.
So to your point.
On what you're teaching for machine shop, you're way behind the curve. And, and I know that, I'm not going to compare certain students because we had certain, what was that, that thing that we competed in back in the day?
Skills USA.
Skills USA.
Deca, Skills USA.
Yeah, I would think it was called something else. We would go compete against the. VICA, that's what it was called, VICA, right? And, and I'm not going to say that Old Colony produces the smartest kids as a, earlier gentleman said, because that's, that's a false statement, right? We were in competition with some really smart individuals from other vocational schools, right? It was just, we had our smart students, right, that stood above and beyond. And that's why we were picked for VICA to go compete against other students from other schools. So, I mean, how much of that 288 is incorporated with, you know, is, is 80 million equipment? Because we're so outdated, I mean, is that part of this?
So I can share a little bit, uh, that, everything that you, that's an all-inclusive number, first of all. The other thing we're doing outside of this number is, as recently as this week, is we're submitting additional competitive grants to try and secure funding. To your point, the grant we most recently, uh, completed and will be submitting before the 30th of October is a request for over $2.5 million of equipment to address exactly what you were just talking about. Because to put that into a capital request for our member towns, you can imagine what the impact of something like that is. It's significant. So we have secured close to $3 million in grant funding over the last decade to offset those costs to our member towns. But those competitive grants come up periodically. And when they do, we put our name in the hat with hopes that we'll be able to secure funding to offset those costs. But rarely do we put in significant capital requests. We tend to be a little bit more conservative in our planning. We have a water tank, it's 50 years old. Certainly, we have concerns about how long a 50-year-old water tank would last. But to replace that water tank right now, when a building project is going to be voted upon on November 18th, would be fiscally irresponsible. You don't replace something of that nature when you're waiting to find out about a vote. If a vote passes, the water tank will be taken care of. If the vote doesn't pass, that's one of the first items we'll need to address, things of that nature. But to Mr. Gaspar's point, there are areas that are antiquated that require a true need. However, we're hoping that this need that we are, um, outlining, this all-inclusive piece, will help us to address that. That's not to say that there aren't pieces that are in perfect working condition that will result in a saving to our, savings to our member towns too. Because we don't want to be frivolous. So one of the examples is we had a choice about where we would build the building. One of those choices was on our athletic fields. If we had built on our athletic fields and looked to build new fields, that would have been a $10 million addition to the project. We decided to maintain the status quo, hold our existing fields and build off of the fields to result in a $10 million savings. All of those considerations came up as a result of the 40 different options that were discussed by the building committee during this process. This process has been a very detailed, multi-year, probably five-year process. On December, uh, December 5th, 2019, we sat in the Cougars' Den, you were with us, and we met with all of our member towns. This was not a snapshot, this was not a quick, uh, decision, as was mentioned earlier. I will articulate that this decision took place over a lengthy period of almost six years to date with plenty of communication, significant consideration in the selection of who would represent our member towns on our building committee to ensure a conduit to every select board in FinCon we serve. It was not an internal school building committee. It was an external committee that consisted of municipal leaders to ensure input so that no snap decisions could be made. And I'm proud of that, extremely proud of that. And we have absolutely built our foundation around, around transparency. Every year, when you see our budget that Mrs. Griffith puts forward, it's a line-by-line overview of every single item in our budget. There are no generalities. You could literally pull out every single line one at a time if you wanted to. Mr. Benoit is shaking his head, Eric shaking his head because we've had conversations routinely about how transparent Old Colony is in our operation. We're well-planned, we're communicative, we make phone calls beyond email, we ask questions and then we respond. So we bring this to you with, with considerable thought. We bring this to you also by hanging a sign on it and acknowledging exactly what Mr. Gaspar said. It's a very big ask, we know that. We're very well aware of it. To say otherwise would absolutely be misleading. We don't come here to be misleading. We do come here to tell you that we don't want to deliver a heart transplant to a 200-year-old, right? That's just poor, poor decision-making. What we want to do is we want to look at a 50-year-old building that is beyond its useful life and make a sound fiscal decision about what the next step should be. If there are questions, we're happy to answer them and we, we are so appreciative that this many people have attended this evening. So thank you for the opportunity.
Yes, of course.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Before we go on, can we address the Matapoisa comparison? This gentleman had said that if he lived in Matapoisa, if his house was in Matapoisa, it would be a sliver. There's an explanation.
Sure, the Matapoisa, the, the number that you see is based on enrollment. So everything that we do is based on enrollment. So when you are, when you receive an assessment, 90% of that assessment is based on your enrollment at Old Colony. 10% is based on your K through 12 enrollment in your entire district. Those proportions are used to determine assessment. I'm actually, uh, I hear very often, we are the Akushnet High Schools. Very many, a lot of people say that to us, you know, you are the Akush. When we were at the Apple Peach Festival, a lot of people came up and said, you know, you're Akushnet's high school. And I take a lot of pride in that. Uh, I simultaneously, we know every year that the, the bulk of conversations will be with, uh, the towns that are most highly represented because they feel the biggest impact. And that's just the truth. So we have to take into consideration when those towns come to us and say, this is a big ask. We have a responsibility to, to conduct ourselves in a fiscally responsible manner and to listen to what they have to say.
If you look at the screen, I don't know what, what you can see. The enrollment of Matapoisa is only 6% of our student enrollment. Therefore, their cost on the capital projects is a sliver of what the other towns are paying. So, but I just wanted to comment, so yes, they're only paying, uh, $19 on $100,000. Okay, that, that explains what the difference is. But I also want to point out what my community is. I live in Rochester. I have half of what you have. I'm $100 less per $100,000 than you do. It is an impact across the board. It is an impact in Rochester because we don't have commercial industry.
I guess my question was more in regards to why they chose a process that would make everybody's vote equal because it would be.
Can I speak, Chad?
No, no, no. I know that there was a choice in which direction to go with that, but it's, it's a requirement with, based on the direction this project decided to go, correct?
We can, let me answer your question of why we chose the vote structure that we did. Can you go to the 16D, 16N slides that shows the different yeses and no's? So we had a choice between a 16N or a 16D vote. A 16D vote is when you go town by town and if one town rejects the vote, you then go to a 16N. If you go to a 16N, it would have added $8 million to the project. But you'd go to a 16N because you wouldn't walk away from a million-dollar feasibility study because that's fiscally irresponsible. We knew that if a 16D vote were to fail, that we'd go to a 16N and it would result in a delay and an $8 million increase to the project. So we said, we're going to forego that and we're going to take one shot and not delay the outcome. Because a delay of the outcome would be an $8 million price tag on the project, which is a fiscally irresponsible approach. And it upsets the people who said no. We didn't want to upset the people who said no. We wanted to do it one time and if people say yes, they say yes. And if they say no, we have 10 days to figure out whether or not we have permission to move forward. So that's the answer to your question about why the vote structure was what it was. It was a, it was out of a, a consideration of what would happen if it was a no on a 16D.
Can you go back? You, that, that scenario played out a little bit earlier and even I'm a little bit confused about.
Sure.
If the community say no, you got 10 days to figure out, what, what does that mean?
I'll pass that to, I, I have not experienced it, so let me pass it to Chad so he can speak more eloquently to that.
Happy to say I haven't experienced it either. But, uh, so the MSBA failed vote policy basically states if a project fails. Remember, the MSBA has skin in the game. They've already funded, uh, feasibility schematic design. So they have money, state money out there, so they're looking to the project to move forward. Uh, so when a project fails, they do give that project an opportunity to go back and address their failure if they can demonstrate to the MSBA's satisfaction that there was a misstep along the way that led to the project's failure. Maybe the community outreach wasn't what it should have been. Or maybe there was a, a field included as an alternate that the community didn't support because it was synthetic turf or something like that. So the MSBA, that's what the failed vote policy is.
So if the vote is no by five member towns, the majority, because that's what this is, a majority, right? Majority of yes cumulatively for the five communities, majority no cumulatively by.
50% plus one, we'll call it, right?
What, whatever it is, right? You said simple majority, so that's all that it is, right? So if it's a no, how would MSBA, even though they have skin in the game, so do the five member towns doing the study? MSBA is not, in my opinion, can override the will of the people. Is that, that's not what we're talking about, 10 days to figure out what they're going to do? Like, you know, if, if there wasn't enough, you use something about communication and outreach and all of that stuff. Oh, I mean, you folks have been doing this quite a bit, you know what kind of outreach you need to do. I think that would be a failed excuse to say to MSBA, yeah, we kind of didn't reach out enough, right? So I don't know what other kind of legitimate to supersede the, the will of the people, in other words. Because it irks the crap out of me when the state legislators did it with their audit and they said, yeah, no, we're not being audited, right? And they supersede the will of the people. That's BS, right? Absolute BS. And I don't like when people start, you know, instilling the fear factor into my constituents and saying, if you say no, it's okay because we're going to come back and within 10 days say we're going to retake that vote. I mean, that's just.
It's quite the opposite. We, we actually, there's no fear factor here. We just.
That's what I'm trying to put out there.
No, I agree. I don't want.
We, we actually made a decision early on that there would be zero fear factor around how we promote this. That is not acceptable. People should be stepping to the polls, making decisions that they feel are right in their heart. And that's up to them personally. But there should be zero fear factor. This is not about fear factor, it's about an aging building. It's 50 years old, it's beyond its useful life. And our job is to present factual information so that people can make informed decisions. Not to, not to instill fear, like Kevin said, that's not okay. And as a matter of fact, that's the reason why we selected the vote structure that we did. Because we didn't want to be in a scenario where someone says, well, why did they go back? We already said no. We just didn't feel okay with that. So I would agree with you 100%. I don't think that there have been any inaccuracies presented at any time by the select board, by Old Colony, the collaboration and the, the attempt to try and provide realistic information has been sincere. The questions have been sincere, it's what should be asked. And we're going to do our best job to provide that information if people need additional information. And you go to our website, oldcolony.us, you can click on MSBA project. Every document from the last six years has been shared there so that people can actually do a look back in the spirit of full transparency. In addition, the www-oldcolonybuildingproject.com website has all, it will take you right there. It has a, a, a category called documents. If you don't find an answer that you need, I would just encourage you to call the school and ask for me. And if I don't have the answer, I will find it for you. But we'll just give you real answers about real questions, that's our job. That's what we owe everybody in terms of our work around this project is just real answers to real questions. So we're here to do that. We will meet as many times as you need us to. Tomorrow night, we'll be with the Akushnet Lions. And tonight, we have a team going back to Old Colony at 6:30 to meet with another group. So we, we're doing everything we can to have boots on the ground in as many places as possible to provide thorough information for people because again, we know it's a big ask. There's no, you, you cannot downplay that at all. And our job is to simply acknowledge that. Thank you.
Aaron, I, I actually have a question that's gonna, it'll be my question and I'll bounce off what somebody else has spoken on. So I, I'd just like to know how much influence the state has had on this project due to MSBA funding, i.e. size of building, amount of new shops, amount of additional students. What impacted that out in the, in the decision-making of the design scope that these gentlemen have put forward?
Sure, so we looked at recommended, uh, shop sizes for the, for the building size. The other thing we did was we actually, um, looked at four different programs. We looked at plumbing, HVAC, dental assisting and biotech. Those were the four. The state gave us the option of, of looking at, we had to study the status quo. And in terms of growth, they gave us a framework of up to 810. During the process, we said 810. During the process, we said eight hundred and ten, we're gonna scale back because of the potential impact on our sending districts. We settled at seven seventy-six so that we could be a fully operational construction program, HVAC and plumbing. And for those who don't know, we're sixty percent male, forty percent female right now, and we felt the dental assisting program would create equity, and we wanted to make sure that our female students also had additional opportunities that are reflected in the southeast labor market blueprint. Dental assisting was one of them. So, all of that planning took place in consultation with, A, recommended shop sizes and classroom sizes, B, through consideration of what impacts would be to our member towns, and then C, the scale back took place because there were people who were advocating aggressively for the eight-ten, and we said, "We'd like to scale that back. We think the seven seventy-six addresses fully construction, fully operational construction, equity, and also allows us to make a bigger impact when we're out on projects." Right now, we have to partner with Greater New Bedford Voke if we want plumbing or HVAC. This allows us to go into our communities and build fully operational structures as a full construction operation.
Dr. Boucher, I'm sorry. My, I have one more question, and I'll get to the article after Mr. Boucher, but does the estimated impact for average single-family dwelling include interest on the remaining balance of what is not paid by the MSBA reimbursement? So, when you break out that hundred and forty-eight, somebody said Akushnet share would be somewhere around fifty-something million dollars. Is this seven hundred and twenty dollars, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars for Akushnet per year on that average assessment? Does that include interest on our fifty-something million dollars, or was interest not included in that? Because interest would be roughly about, and on that amount of money for thirty years at four percent would be somewhere in the room of another eight million dollars.
It's in this room. So, this is at thirty-four percent.
So, the seven twenty-one includes interest on our share of, well, I know you bundle it all up, then you broke it out, so it would be something like sixty-something, right? Not the fifty-something.
The district pulls the bond, and then it's principal and interest payment annually is recalculated. One thing that is important to note in this scenario, Walter, slide sixty-three again, this assumes, so, one, it doesn't have the mass save or the tax credits captured, so that eleven million dollar savings right out of the gate is not in these numbers. This is on the full hundred and fifty-nine million dollar district share. The other important assumption to remember in here is, this assumes every single dollar is spent on the project, so we do have a healthy owner-controlled contingency of seventeen million dollars baked into that. There's millions of dollars for things like furniture, technology. Any bid savings reduces that number, so that's generally like when we talk about the Bristol Plymouth thirty-five million dollar projected savings, that would pull those tax impacts down substantially.
So, you just use the hundred and fifty-something million dollars? I thought it was one forty-eight.
So, this is run off a hundred and fifty-nine million. The one forty-eight is after eleven...
Is that minus that eleven million for the targeted mass save?
This, no, not in those numbers, so it'll come down from those numbers.
So, real...
This is worst-case scenario.
The real number is one fifty-something? What's the number?
One forty-eight after mass save and IRA.
Right, so I'm talking about that's about eleven million is. So, that's half of the eleven million if you get the eleven million.
No, these don't include the eleven million. The projection doesn't include the eleven million. So, the numbers...
So, one forty-eight minus eleven if you get those savings, no?
One fifty-nine.
One fifty-nine minus eleven, gets you the one forty-eight.
I'm pretty sure that's what I said, but okay. So, one forty-eight if you get the eleven million, right?
Yep, but the scenario is...
And that's all, interest has already been embedded in that number?
Yep, four percent, so...
Thirty years.
Yep.
Good. Dr. Boucher?
Me too. Aaron, I understand the need for the project, but this is definitely a big ask for our residents, especially residents that are on fixed incomes. And that's just the debt exclusion portion that they'll see on their tax bill. What's more concerning to me as chair of the Finance Committee, because we go through this struggle every year with balancing the budget, is the annual assessment from Old Colony. Now, last year, I believe it was around three percent or around four hundred thousand dollars that we were assessed to the town. Now, if that doubles to eight hundred thousand, because I think that's, if we go from fifty-five students a year to a hundred and six, then the assessment, the annual assessment's gonna double, so I'm just assuming our assessment's gonna be around eight hundred K. That's what's really concerning to me, is how are we gonna balance the annual assessment cost and factor that in to our other budgetary expenses that we have obligations to? Every year's been a struggle for us. The past year was a struggle. The last thing I want to see us resort to is tax overrides to fund the operational budget. I know other communities resorting to it, but I don't want to see us do that. There's enough on our backs of our taxpayers already, and just, I don't want to see it.
I think you're in a unique situation in Akushnet because your students have to go to school somewhere, right? So, money follows students, and there's either tuition somewhere, or there's tuition at Old Colony, call it, an assessment at Old Colony, right? But money follows students. There's offsets in revenue that come in that actually impact numbers and projections. I share your sentiment. I don't think you're off the mark. I think that, right, like, one hundred percent.
I'm not speaking for or against it. I'm just looking at the numbers for...
Right. I think from a holistic perspective, we have to think about those things, right? It's real.
That's what we do on the Finance Committee, is we just assess the numbers and try and make it make sense.
So, our job is to, our job is to give you a worst-case scenario and then to work through those worst-case scenarios and under-promise and over-deliver. You know, a comment was made in a meeting not too long ago about my increase, and I'll tell you publicly, I actually rewrote my contract and took a percent less last year. I had an amount in my contract, I took a percent less in my contract because of the comment that had been made as a show of good faith during a negotiation. So, I'm a man of my word. I feel very much tied to our five-member communities. What I do at Old Colony is what I live for. This is not small potatoes to me, this is very important. The students I serve every day, I have six at home, but I have five hundred and sixty that are in front of me every single day, and my job is to treat them like my own, and I want what's best for them. Somebody over here said our kids are competing with other schools like Bristol Plymouth, and I think she hit the nail on the head. Our kids deserve opportunities like this, and I think that my job is to do whatever I can to provide people with as much information as possible to make an informed decision and respect whatever the outcome may be. But if it means thirty-seven or fifty meetings to make sure people have all of the information they need to make an informed decision, then that's what we'll do.
There's no doubt you're passionate about this, and you should be. And I appreciate the detailed line on budgets every year. We always use your budget as an example for other budgets in our town because it provides a lot of transparency, so we can see everything. But this, it's not, it's not easy. This is not, what we do is not easy here, but I understand, I recognize the need.
That's it. Great. May?
I have a question. Do we have, we have to pay for our students to go to Fahaven High School, correct? All right, so what is the budget on that? Because most of our students go there, or Old Colony, and very few go to Beattie at Bristol Aggie.
That's part of the school budget.
It's part of the school budget?
Yeah, that's the school's budget.
Okay. Now, when the gentleman that left said something about having an increase per student per over thirty years, if you take that and you say, "Okay, let's just get them to a regular high school, no technical high school where they're gonna graduate, and then they can go on to a career." Let's say now you have to pay for a college education, it's gonna be costing a lot more than that over thirty years, and they come out with a lot more debt. And this, they get a career when they leave. The other thing with you saying about the antique equipment or whatever, I'm a hairdresser, I taught hairdressing. Also, no matter what, you always have to go to your basics, you learn from your basics, and when you get out in the workforce, they teach you the extras. This will allow them to have a little bit more extras so they can go compete. If you go to BP and you look at what they're proposing and what they're doing at BP, it's outrageously amazing. Even something that was done a little bit of years ago, New Bedford Voke, go check their vocational school out, they're by far ahead of us in every step, every step.
That was my point of what I made about integrated machine shop, of course.
Yeah, but you need to, if you're in the trade, you know you need to have your basics. You can't, you have to have your basics, that's how you get your licenses. You get your basics, you go out into the field, and you get, you go on.
I'm very well-versed. I graduated from the vocational school, as I told you. But I can tell you right now, there's mom and pop shops, they're CNC shops, right? You have, you might have a large Titleist corporation that might have a few small manual machines that they're just whittling up a onesies and twosies spot to fix a piece of equipment. Other than that, most machine shops aren't using manual equipment, because by the time you're done making that piece, on your manual piece of equipment, I'll already program that machine, and I'll spit out a hundred of them by the time somebody's done making one of them.
Totally understand.
I have a lot of background and experience on what I'm talking about, and I'm actually saying to the school, "If that's still what we got, I can see why you need..."
They do.
He's being, he was being nice when he talked about, I think, three million bucks in equipment?
Oh, yeah.
So, I was in the business for a long time, I worked for multi-billion-dollar corporations. I can tell you right now, one CNC piece of equipment is probably the cost of your house, okay? So, there's a lot of money to be spent on equipment, and it's not for every shop. Machining is a little unique, welders and things like that.
Oh, no, I wasn't arguing with your point at all. I was just saying that they do have antique stuff, so they are putting more, more equipment into this.
I get your point. So, basic, you know, fresh bin softwood, you start off on the manual machines, or they're junior, senior, you want to get them out of the gate and be ready for the industry, right?
Right, but that's, I was making the point more so that, yes, they have the antique stuff. So, if we did propose this, and they do go ahead and do the project, then they're actually getting better equipment. They will be getting better equipment, which they will be ahead of the rest. And the other thing, too, is with the MS thing project, if I'm to understand, if they get a no vote, basically, they're gonna go back and they're gonna ask why they get a no vote, and they might give us enough, like, another chance to try and get a yes vote, but if it's a no vote, then they just take their money off the table, basically, and they'll put it into some other house, some other school. That's pretty much how it works, right? So, if it's a no vote, it's not, it's not like they're threatening us, it's just like, "Okay, so this money will go to another school who says, 'Okay.'"
That's correct.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, no, you're correct.
That's, yeah, so it's not being like, "Oh, if you don't say no..."
No, basically, basically, if we, if we do have a building project, then the penny on the tax dollar that we've been paying in, we become the beneficiary of, right? So, it becomes a direct benefit back to us. That's why the pipeline is so significant and why it's so difficult to get in, because they can only select a certain number of schools to be a part of the program. Minuteman Regional was on the list for, I believe, eleven years before they were approved in the pipeline. We did submit a request to go into the pipeline, we were rejected the first year, we were accepted the second year. And that was, I think, a result of Jack McCarthy, who at the time was the executive director, who walked through our building and saw firsthand...
Well, my son was there when there was a light that exploded on the ground, and there was, one whole wing was split, when my son was there at Old Colony, so...
So, I think that if folks have a chance to see it firsthand, there's a deeper understanding. We did put slides online that show some of the real capital needs so that people who might only see a ten-minute process or a ten-minute presentation could actually see a more in-depth overview of the real big capital items that are in dire need. You know, we snaked a culinary drain a year and a half ago, and we pulled dirt out, which tells you the infrastructure has disappeared underneath, right?
The pipes are operating.
Yeah, so, but on the flip side, we had, out of two potential percentage points for reimbursement, we received one point seven percent. The average is about one point two-five, is that right?
One and a half.
One and a half? So, we're above the average by a significant margin in terms of what we receive because of the job our maintenance team does in upkeeping the building. What's within their control? When you walk through our building, it might look like an older building, but it's very well-maintained. And I want to say on record, I'm not embarrassed by anything that we do, nor am I embarrassed by what we provide our students. I'm very proud of the work that they do and what they turn out, given the nature of what they're working with. But I do believe that we could do better, to Kevin's point, right? And I think he's spot on when he says, "Nobody's operating a lathe by hand at Titleist," right? And so, that's what we're trying to alleviate, yeah.
That's what this is gonna allow us to do.
This has been productive, and I appreciate where the conversation has taken us, so thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Aaron?
Jesse Ellis, out of Poiseville. I think one of the things that's really concerning for me, knowing a lot of people who do have limited means, they have fixed incomes, is there's a lot of unpredictability when it comes to year-over-year costs per household with this project, the way I see it, partially related to expansion of the head count in the school, growing by over two hundred students, but also, more importantly, because of the lottery system that's been implemented. Now, I only have very limited understanding of exactly how that lottery system is gonna be administered, and my understanding is that it's somewhat an evolving process, so it's not fully baked. Is that accurate?
So, did you say Jesse?
Yes.
I don't know if you were here earlier when we touched on the historical and the predictive data for the lottery.
I missed the first, probably twenty minutes of the presentation. We can take that offline if we need to.
Yeah, no problem. But to your point, what we've tried to do is make sure that it's as predictable as possible. And if folks remember a few years back, I think it was five and a half or six years back, Freetown left the district, right? And that was a hundred students. Over a four-year period, we saw a hundred students depart. So, if you take that and you look at what the impacts were with a one-hundred-student departure, because we backfilled that, don't forget, with our five-member towns, and nobody really blinked in a major way. There were impacts, and they were felt, and we made adjustments, but nobody really panicked, and we did okay. And so, I just want people to understand that we've been through this in some way, shape, or form already with the departure of Freetown, because when Freetown left, again, a hundred students from out of district, twenty-five at a time, came into the district. We're talking about fifty-four students instead of twenty-five in a quarterly fashion, a spiral plan that will take place over a period of time that will be predictable to some extent, right? And that impact will be certainly mitigated by the fact that our quotas are predictable. So, they're more predictable than what we've dealt with ever before, because by, with the merit-based system, you couldn't predict who was gonna get in and who wasn't. Within the next three or four weeks, I should be able to call Doc and say, "Hey, Doc, I think I have a ballpark of what the preliminary number will look like," right? And then we can plan accordingly. Historically, it's always been an email, and we had an increase of eleven students this year in Akushnet. Anytime it's over eight, I get on the phone, I send an email, and I say to folks, "Just so you know, you're at plus eleven for budgeting purposes." So that out of the gate, we have a plan together. It's always together. There's no surprises in the way we operate. So, to your point, Jesse, I think the predictability is more so than people understand. I think we've been through the exercise in a smaller way, but I do also think you make a valid point around being able to anticipate what may be coming down the bike, but the lottery's more predictable than a merit-based system.
Aaron?
And Jesse, you know, you know as an elected school committee member, right? The perception in Akushnet, because for generations, we've never had a high school. I think the perception is that we're just a K-through-eight school district, and we know that that's wrong. It's morally wrong, right? It's a K-through-twelve school district. It's not, once the kids walk out of Ford Junior High, we're done with them, right? And I think that's, in some ways, that, I think, is why it's hard for people to get their head around this decision, because it's really the first time in generations where the voters of Akushnet are gonna have to say, "We're gonna really have to lean in and invest into our high school education for our students," right? And if you've, if you've cycled out, like, if your kids have already gone through high school, and you don't have grandchildren or great-grandchildren, this is really tough if you don't have any skin in the game, right? This isn't, it's a, it's a, it's a big ask for people today, but it's a vote to set the town up for the next fifty, sixty years, which, again, it's a tough ask for a lot of people because you're living, people living paycheck to paycheck. Totally understand that. You know, my, my kid's a fifth generation living in this town. I went to Catholic school my whole career. My grandparents, my mother, they pay taxes, and Akushnet didn't see one return on their investment from an education standpoint, right? But that's what we do. We pay for things that we may not use because we know that that's part of a civil society, and that's what we have to do.
But I will say this, David, real quickly. The COA shed in Akushnet, our kids did that, right? The projects that you see throughout the town, our kids do that. The electric car charging stations, our students do that. Well, if you walk into our culinary department on a Thursday or a Friday, between the hours of eleven... of 11 o'clock and 12:10, I know it's only an hour and 10 minutes, but that's lunch, right? It could be a little bit earlier, you will see people from Akushnet who may not have children in the system, but they're there because it's a destination. The new destination will be different because the front-facing part of the building has been constructed to ensure that people don't have to walk through the building, right? When they walk from culinary to cosmetology, and I only go to culinary, you can imagine why, right? But when I, when someone goes from culinary to cosmetology, they have to walk through the building. That's not fair to our elderly population. What we've created in terms of our planning process is a front-facing building where the strip that serves the public will be accessible for those people who use it most.
Yeah.
That's the population we're talking about. So we do serve that population with pride and it's a wonderful way for our students to prepare for life. There is no better training. When I was a kid, if I wanted to call a friend, I had to talk to their parent, right? Mr. Gaspar is so-and-so home and he'd say, oh, yes, hold on, how are you doing, Aaron? I'd say, oh, I'm doing great, right? And then I'd talk to the parent. You know what kids do now? They text each other with two words. They'd never have to talk to a parent. When our kids are in culinary and our elderly population comes in, they learn how to talk to people. It's an awesome, it's an awesome exercise, right? So we're not only serving our population on a multitude of levels, but we're providing our kids with real experiences that are so meaningful and there's a reciprocity. And we're gonna be able to do more and I'm proud and excited about that. And, and for all of the equipment we may not have, we turn out some pretty phenomenal human beings. Lauren, in the other room, Lauren's one of our graduates, right? And she's doing a heck of a job here.
So good she's not even in the other room anymore.
Yeah, I mean, you know, just kind of closing out my, my thought process here. You know, realistically speaking, I, I think it's probably understood that a vocational school simply is just not going to have the lifespan of a, a traditional high school. It's just not. I mean, it has a more robust infrastructure. It's a much more complicated building. When shops get replaced, you know, there's a lot more cost that goes into it and oftentimes there's gonna be expansion. A lot of times we'll also see some shops maybe have to get discontinued over time. I mean, there are, you know, programs that have been in place in the past that very soon are gonna be replaced with, you know, large language models and AI and there's not gonna be much value in the labor market for them.
So I'll tell you, our school's 50 years old. Could it go five, 10 more years? Probably. Is, is that the lifespan of a traditional high school? It actually is. So there, there's similarities. I would actually argue that it does last as long as a traditional high school. But I do think, to your point, we've already considered the flexibilities necessary for certain spaces so that when we build, we don't have to disassemble. So we're, we're already considering the flexibilities and where the market will go in terms of vocational education, because to your point, anybody here, whoever took spring, screen printing as a kid in middle school, when you used to cut out the plastic, peel back the design and then run a squeegee over it and make yourself a T-shirt, that used to be graphic design. Graphic design is all on Adobe computers now, right? And so we've evolved, but our HVAC systems haven't, because you need a different HVAC system in graphic design than you did with a squeegee. So we're considering those flexibilities when we build so that we don't run into situations where it's a constant iteration of infrastructure. The only thing that should be iterating is the, is the equipment and the furnishings, because we should be creating and setting a table and the gentleman who was here earlier who said, well, why a cost? Well, those costs allow you that flexibility too, right? So it's been a very thoughtful process. I don't think we've left many stones unturned. For people to have questions and for this team to be able to pull up a slide every time there's a question is indicative of thorough preparation. It's not a, it's not a fly-by-the-seat-of-your-pants decision. It's thorough preparation that took place over six years. So I'm passionate. We're here to answer questions, but to your point, um, I think, A, lottery will be more consistent and B, we're, we're looking to build infrastructure that will last.
Yep. And, you know, I, I would just say that, you know, this is the, the last time that I in my lifetime will most likely have to vote on a replacement vocational high school. I mean, not to be morbid, but probably even the youngest people in this room, and I'm probably one of them, will probably be, have passed away by the time a replacement school is necessary. I'm gonna be paying off the note for this, that said, beyond my retirement age. So there's, there's kind of a dual line of thinking here, like doing the best for the kids that we have and for future generations and being fiscally responsible. And seeing the preparations that have gone into the project, I do think that that hasn't been done. So I congratulate you, especially in all the preparation that you've done to be able to answer these questions.
And hopefully, when you make your last payment, you'll hire an electrician who graduate from the university.
If we don't have robots, I'll play that, but hey, you know.
So, Jesse, I, I appreciate, appreciate your concern and Mr. Mouché's concern. Well, I think the FinCom and all of us, everybody in this room, including Mr. Blieski and the OC team, you know, I think one of the biggest struggles for me, and I've been around for a little while and I've dealt with OC, I was the liaison from 2005 to 10 when I was on FinCom. The biggest struggle when I heard about this project and the exorbitant cost for this project is, I talked to a lot of people, as you could imagine, in this community, right? I'm a pretty well-known person. I speak with a lot, especially elderly people, um, in my, I don't know if I've had such a difficult decision to make and I know to some people it, it seems pretty easy depending on what side of the fence you're on, right? But what I'm trying to say is, I struggle, right? Because I, I'm extremely passionate for, for the elderly, right, our senior population, um, and I'm almost there. Um, and, but I'm also very passionate about our children, right? I mean, you, you can get my, you can get to my heart two ways really quick. A senior person or a small child, and you help me, right? And, and that's where I struggle is the balance between trying to figure out that decision is, and look, and, and I know for a, I've sitting in many seniors' homes in this community and they are living, as Mr. Warner said, paycheck to paycheck, right? And, and my biggest fear is, is a senior citizen losing their house, right? Because they, they spent their life building this community along with everybody else and there's a good chance that they can't afford the extra, if it's gonna be 700 bucks, depending on what kind of house they live. It might be only 400 bucks, but to some people, I can tell you this, four, $500 a year is a lot of money. And I can also tell everybody this, that we've questioned on that budget and I don't know if it was Sarah that made the comment, it might be $500 more a student. I don't believe that number at all, my friend. Um, the number, the cost per student right now is roughly $16,000 for an education at Old Colony, okay? I got some paperwork in front of me from 2011 that says the cost per student is $8,800. So figure it out. I mean, the numbers jumped dramatically. It's basically doubled in 15 years, if you wanna call it 15 years. It hasn't even been 15 years. It's, it's, it's not a dig on Old Colony of the cost per student, because when we talk about, and other people have brought up Fave and I who befriended, I don't know the exact number. The last time I checked, it was somewhere around, call it 12, 13-ish?
Yeah.
For an education over there. So when we talk about, well, maybe we're gonna send 25, 50 more students to Old Colony, so if that money, it's too bad Kristen Flynn wasn't here, she was part of the school department, she would know more about this, they're carrying some of that money, I don't know if it's all their money, in their budget existing, right? Based on the population of seventh and eighth grade is moving forward, then we figure out where it's gonna go. So if you look at it, if they are carrying a certain amount of money based on a certain size graduating class, what I told, said in the last meeting is you gotta look at the difference. If it's 12, if it's 13,000 to send somebody to another high school and it's 16,000 over here, then you're gonna take those two, 10 kids, if you're pulling that money from the school department's budget, right? But you gotta remember, once it's gone, it's gone. It's going over there. Now the school department's only got so much money in that kitty again. You take those 10 kids by the free grant, if that's the difference, it's 30,000 bucks.
I think that one important thing to think about there is, it's not a matter of simple math. We can't just take 10 or 15 kids from Fairhaven High and send them to Old Colony. Really, it comes down to the programs that Old Colony is providing and whether or not they generate the interest of the kids to attend that school.
Sure.
Now granted, middle school was going into high school, they're not necessarily taking career, a career mindset to it. A lot of it is gonna have to do with, where do my parents go? Where are my best friends going? How early do I have to get up in the morning? Sorry. First of all, it's just the way it is. So, you know, it, a lot of it is going to depend on what is being offered at the school and how many kids it attracts. So there's a lot of unknowns in there. Uh, it could very well be that the school is so, so robust that they end up earning 60% of Akushnet kids' interests, 70% of Akushnet kids' interest in five years, 10 years. We don't know.
Right, we talked about that too, a good drop, right?
Good drop.
It depends on, so we know, Mr. Benoit, if you wanna help me out with this, when we're on the Massif Lane Committee circuit, they said our public schools enrollment has been decreasing.
It's decreased 8% for the middle school. It's decreased 8% over the last five, six years.
So if, if that's the case, we keep talking about more kids going to high school, but how can that be if our enrollment's dropping in our middle school? That means less kids are graduating from the eighth-grade class to go to ninth grade, right?
Yeah.
So we, we don't know what that is. It might be, one of my other biggest concerns is, say we have a robust, next, after the school's all built, we have a robust six-year period and we, we get to that capacity and then all of a sudden that all drops off and they've loaded schoolteachers and all these administrators and everything else. The population can drop. We're still stuck with all of that staffing because, like I said before, sometimes it don't matter. You have 20 kids in a classroom or 10 kids in a classroom, you still need a DM schoolteacher, right? Or an administrator. So it's really, that's really where my concern would come. If we stood robust, 750 kids, solid, not a problem, because, you know, that's where the budget was built on, but if you went, gain buses, you built that budget for all of that new, those, that new staff that we talked about last time, that's where it's really killing us, right?
And like, I don't have it, first of all, you know, I do, but if you take a look at population growth, this is really getting in the weeds, but if you take a look at population growth statistics, it's almost unarguable that enrollment in schools is gonna continue to go down over the next 25 years. People are having less kids. People are having kids a lot later in life. Now, what that ends up, there's a lot, and I don't need to get into that, but long story short, it's, we're probably gonna continue to see enrollments decline over the next 25 years. It's just the way it's gonna be.
If I can show you an enrollment trend chart, this is 10 years of Old Colony. You'll see the lower piece of this chart is September, the higher piece is August. The blue line, uh, the low line, the last dot is at 300. The average applications fall between 300 and 360 students per year for 150 seats over a 10-year period of time with an antiquated building. I'm not worried about a drop-off and our decision was made based on trends over a decade. So I just want you to know, when you talk about worrying about where kids will go, I'm worried about where kids will go too, because the kids who wanna come to Old Colony can't and we've gotta limit the number of kids we say yes to. But the reality is that that's a 10-year trend that addresses exactly what you're talking about. So the trend supports the growth and even with the growth to 776, there will be kids who still don't have the opportunity, but it will be better.
Yeah, and if you're getting 2X the applications that you're getting admissions, with the new school capacity, you might see, you know, maybe 65% of accepted applications.
Yeah.
One way or another, there's still gonna be that many kids going to the school.
But it was not a, it was not a randomized decision to end up at 776 and I just wanna show you that the, the thought that went into this is considerable. Um, it wasn't, you know, there was no, we didn't just pull out a pin and close our eyes and, and pop it somewhere. We, we gave some considerable thought. We scaled back, right? Cause if you're getting that many applications and you build to 1120, um, that, what's the impact of that? That's not acceptable, so.
Thank you. And it's all the questions I have. Did you have something?
No, just anybody else?
Yes. Paul Martins from Margaret Street. I'm not sure of how to, uh, present this question. So all the towns, we need a high school. So all the five towns need a high school. It's gonna cost 288 million dollars. I know we, and as, if living in Akushnet, we, we're paying a higher rate. So is there any way, I know, I'm, I'm a dumb guy. I'm an HVAC guy. I went to vocational school 30 years ago and the HVAC.
You want a job? We're gonna be looking for an HVAC teacher, so if you want a job, give us your card. You're not a dumb guy, by the way.
I know.
Please don't say that.
But, uh, so since all the towns need it, why doesn't all the towns pay for the school? Because that's, we need to build it. That's the big thing, so. Make it equal for everybody, then I know it's gonna be even more for us during the operating budget. That's another thing I'm worried about. What does our operating budget gonna be? It's gonna be a lot higher, so. But if everybody pays the share for the new building, the building itself, which we need, I think that would be some, there, but I'm not sure if it works that way.
So it's, you said Paul, right? It's, it's based on our district. Do we have a regional agreement? And the regional agreement outlines how we approach any type of capital. And in the agreement, it says 90% of capital is paid based on enrollment at Old Colony. 10% is based on K through 12 enrollment. So it's really dictated by the district agreement, to answer your question. Same thing holds true really when we're assessing our member towns. That formula is used. So, um, a mentor of mine years ago said, money follows students. And that's basically what it, what it comes down to is, because Matapoisette has a small percentage of students at Old Colony, they're paying a smaller percentage of the assessment. What that protects against is, if let's say you had zero students, your costs shouldn't be the same as every other school district, as every other member town, if that makes sense. So it protects against that, um, in some capacity. The K through 12 number ensures that you still have some stake in the game, because your, your membership is maintained, but the majority of the number comes from the enrollment at Old Colony, if that makes sense.
Aaron, I think we discussed this last time, which is if for some reason the numbers change over time.
Yep.
Then things recalibrate, correct?
Correct. So this is an annual assessment and that's really important. Again, to Jesse's point, that's why I actually think the lottery is gonna work in our favor in terms of predictability, because it's much easier to predict. And that annual assessment will dictate where we go. It's not static. So if for some reason there's a fluctuation in enrollment, that assessment changes with the fluctuation in enrollment. Um, but as of right now, and for some time, if you look, if you do a historical lookback, Akushnet has always been a very, very large piece of our population.
I understand. But like Mr. Gaspar said, there's a lot of elderly people. By the time this thing gets paid off, I'm gonna be one of them elderly people and I probably will never live to see it, but I'm gonna be in the same boat there, because I'm gonna retire soon. I'm gonna be on a fixed income and it's a big ask for that amount of money.
I think it's a big ask, but I think if you're an HVAC guy, then, uh, I can guarantee you'll have a job when the building opens.
I understand that. I'm, I'm glad they're doing it, because there is, when I started in the trades, they were saying that the trades are falling apart. There's no, not enough people in the trades. That was 30 years ago. So I'm sure it's even higher now. And I'm glad you guys are doing that and I think it's gonna be a great thing for the school. And I, to Mr. Gaspar's point, I, you have to have the newest stuff, new technology to work on. I know you, somebody said about the basics. Yeah, you get the basics. You always have the basics. You'll never forget them. But the way technology's going, HVAC, you're, you're a electrician, you're a pipe fitter, uh, you gotta do control work, so there's different things and aspects that you gotta learn. So that's, if you don't have that experience, when you get out of high school, they're gonna say, well, sorry, you don't have enough experience.
Paul, one, one last thing I just wanna offer up is that the Board of Selectmen, recognizing that this, you know, this question was gonna come on the table, we've taken some action over the last year, right? We adopted, uh, with Mr. Gaspar's insistence, the Heroes Act for Veterans, that if you meet a certain income threshold, you get a reduction on your tax. We have what's called the Senior Work Program, where if you meet a certain income threshold and you're willing to volunteer sometime, uh, at Town Hall or any other town department, you get a reduction on your taxes, right? We, we see abatements. Uh, we've also, we've done things where we've waived medical fees for people who are in, you know, in a bad spot. So we've, in, in addition, we even talked about reducing the CP, uh, the Community Preservation Act obligation, even it's a half a percentage point, but we recognize that this is a big ask, so we've at least tried to do some things to at least show to you in good faith that we understand what you're up against, that it's not just, hey, open up the wallet, that we at least try to do some things for those who are the most vulnerable in our town, so.
And I'm a recipient of the Veterans Act, so I give a, a beatment on my taxes. I appreciate the town does that. That's.
They give you a service.
Thank you. Uh, so yeah, I'm glad that you guys are looking to different things and to you, I'm not sure your name is, I'm sorry.
Aaron.
Aaron. Your presentation was spot on. You guys are like, you got answer for everything. So you did a lot of work. I appreciate it. I think a lot of people do.
Appreciate it.
So, thank you.
Dr. Mouché, we have one more and if there's nothing else, that'll be, we'll, we'll close it there.
It's my last thing, I promise. Um, Aaron, the last time we met and we, we were in this room, I had, I had asked about speaking to some of our
to some of our elected state officials, right? So I was fortunate enough to be in a meeting with Senator Montigny regarding our elementary school project, and I asked him, and I just posed this question, I said, you know, with all the tax dollars we spend in this state, because it drives me nuts, because we're one of the most expensive states to live in this, in this country, right? I said, "Why, why doesn't our state have a separate infrastructure stabilization fund specifically for projects like this, for schools, for public education, where we could tap into that and have more money available, so we can ease the burden on our taxpayers?" And all he said, all he said was, "All we have is a general stabilization fund, there's nothing like that." And I just, it drives me nuts, because it's like, where's all our tax dollars going? That, this is specifically where I would want to see it going, is for something like this, so we don't, our residents that are sitting in here aren't worried about paying their property taxes.
So amen to that, Doc, let me just say, first of all, I was off mic, amen to that. David and I went to the State House, and I asked him, because he has children at Old Colony and he's working on the Select Board, so I did ask him if he would accompany me on the State House floor, and we presented to the Education Committee about almost exactly that. MAVA, I'm the president of MAVA, it's the Massachusetts Association of Vocational Administrators, I'm the president-elect of the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. We're working diligently to advocate for funding to make up and account for the differential required for the building of vocational schools. And so we've asked for people to give consideration to that type of differential, we've mapped out an entire presentation, so that people would have answers similar to what you've seen tonight, to show the cost for FFNE, for square footage differentials, and we've advocated on a multitude of levels. I was in Senator Lewis's office, he heads the Education Committee to have conversations around this. But it's been tireless, I promise you that. The advocacy doesn't stop at a vote, the advocacy continues, because our job is to secure funding to the best of our ability to offset the costs of a project like this. If we're successful in securing the $5 million that we're requesting in our grant later this week, that $5 million comes off this project, right? So we're, we've been extremely aggressive in our pursuit to try and secure funding for offsets, and that will continue, I assure you of that. But you're, I think you're spot on. The other thing that people should consider is, when you're looking at towns like a Bristol-Plymouth, right, or a South Shore-Vogue, they're sharing pieces of the pie with a much larger number of people. They have more member towns. So one of my advocacy pieces, in a letter to every single legislator that serves our five member towns, is, "Our pie is cut into five pieces. How can we help? Because we only have five pieces." Right? Other schools have nine or 11, in a larger, in a much larger group to share that pie with. So my ask recently was, is there anything we can do, either through fair share funding or something of that nature, to somehow alleviate the burden that we know comes as a result of a large ask, right? So I just want people to know that we're not sitting idly by. Our efforts have been tireless in the advocacy around things such as what, what you just mentioned, Doc.
Thank you. You know, they, they need to, they need to draw a map, go right to the state's stabilization fund where there's $8 billion sitting there, and say, "Why don't we take a little bit of that money and help out the folks that are building new schools," right? I mean, that's where, that's where the money's sitting, they collect it, exorbitant amount of state sales tax. Give me a break, sitting on $8 billion. We can go on about how they funded other ridiculous things, but again, if you have $8 billion sitting in the kitty, Mr. Polianski's over there saying, "Oh, I'm going to ask for $5 million," I was just going to yell at him and say, "Well, you should have went for $50 million," right?
The limit was five, but we have, we, we went to the max, but we have had amazing support from our legislators on every, you know, like, literally, all of our legislators have been phenomenal in their support of Old Colony. We, we feel blessed to have that level of support, and even in our member towns, I just want people to know that when, when tough questions come our way, people are doing their jobs. Please don't ever misinterpret that for a lack of a relationship. We have a wonderful relationship with our five member towns, and there is very, very tight collaboration between us and every FinCom and every Select Board and every legislator who serves our well-being, and we're proud of that. You know, I think that that has developed over the years, but it's comfortable enough to have difficult conversations, and that's how you move forward, because people deserve to hear answers to difficult conversations. So I, I just don't ever want that to be misinterpreted as, you know, a strained relationship, it's not. It's what, we received questions tonight before we came, that's part of the reason why we're prepared, because people said, "We're going to be asking you some questions, could you please make sure you have answers?" That's a courtesy that, that was offered to us, and we have an obligation to respond to those types of things. But that's also called a functional relationship. So, you know, the credit goes to the group, not just to Old Colony. We work collaboratively, and we always have, and we'll continue to do that. So thank you.
Aaron, just one last time, the website, I know this is a lot of information to digest, and I was told tonight, not everybody's on Facebook or Instagram or whatever, everybody pretty much can go on the internet from what I understand, I've heard that, so, what's the website? Okay, and we can at least, we'll put that out on, like, All Things A Cushion It, if you can put that out there, then all you do is click on that, that'll give you everything you need to know about, you can go on the tax calculator, all the above. Ultimately, this is a gut check for everybody in this community. They know, you know what you can and cannot afford, what you're willing to invest in or not. Not for me to tell you what to do, but I can only attest to the process has been thorough, and I'm willing to put my name behind that because of the process, so take that.
Yeah, I meant to ask a question earlier, real quick, this won't be very long. So, thank you so much for your, your presentations, you've been very transparent with the board in the past in our annual budget meetings, I want to personally thank you for that. So this probably should fuel more information for people. What if this doesn't pass? What are your big projects that could happen if this doesn't happen that could impact our budgets going forward, five, 10 years?
So the water tank needs to be taken care of immediately if this were not to pass, I need people to know that. That's, I, I feel like I'm playing Russian roulette every day, I come in, I go like, "Oh, is this water tank going to live?" Or is it not going to live? So that would be an immediate ask, right? The other thing we're, we're talking about is bringing water from Middleborough into Old Colony, because we have no redundancy, we have no fire protection, we're dependent upon a singular well. That to me is a nightmare, if something were to go wrong with the well, that's a problem, right? So that's going to happen regardless of whether the project happens or doesn't happen, we need to figure out what that infrastructure looks like. They've already tied into the Anymaxim House on North Ave, and so it would be an extension of that line, and we've already had conversations with Middleborough, they approved it at their town meeting last spring. So that's another example, Eric, of some of what you might see. Our phone lines, if you walk into the basement, you may have been down, they look like they're from 1975, because they are. We have to order parts on eBay to replace our phone lines, it looks like the old switchboards from back in the day. So, you know, I, I always picture, is there someone down there saying, "Oh, hold on, I'll connect you to the call," right? But it's that old. Those need to be replaced. Our speaker system through the school, absolutely not up to snuff, that needs to be replaced. We're talking about huge ticket items that we live with, they're subpar, but the flipside is, we have really happy kids who love coming to school, and so I don't want, I don't want to ever paint a picture of it being dismal. It's not dismal, it's just that it needs repair. But those are just a few examples. The asphalt, absolutely devastating. When you come in to the driveway, stay to the right, we do our best to patch, but stay to the right. Windows are failing, the seals on windows, and some of the old hardware on some of the doors, failing, right? Cracked infrastructure in the brick, there's only so much you can do with that.
Basketball floor.
Uh, the basket, yes, the basketball floor. So there's pictures online, Eric, but the priority, I'd say, step one, water tank, step two, water line.
How much would that tank cost? Have you, right, any estimate on the tank, though?
Not, not recently, sort of throw a number out, would be frivolous, I think, at this point. We'll be shopping, if we need to, on November 19th, right?
Right. Just one, one quick thing, I know it's a bit, yeah.
Sure, it's not a game on, Jesse?
No, 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 uh, sports, for those. Anyway, so just a quick question, so I've got a real mindset of stewardship, you know, we build this new school, we want to make sure it's well-maintained, as you have maintained the existing school, there's no doubt about that. We're going to have a honeymoon period after this new school is built, where there won't be any or very minimal capital expenses. So has there been a process, or is there already a process in place to sock money away into a capital expense stabilization fund that'll accrue interest, that way, once we do hit that 10-year, 12-year, whatever that timeframe is, where we can start dipping into that savings that we've been socking away for that initial 10 years?
There is yet, we have a stabilization fund, Sarah implemented that upon hire, and that stabilization fund is growing, but that takes time. Part of our feasibility was paid out of, our portion of feasibility is paid out of stabilization, but that will continue to grow, and I think from a fiscal planning perspective, yes, there is a stabilization.
Eric, that's all I had, thank you.
They have, they have a budget, you still have the E and D budget?
Um-
Or did you convert that into that stabilization?
Some of E and D goes to stabilization, some of E and D does not go to stabilization.